Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order, Monday, February 6, 2023. School Board Work Session. Our land acknowledgement, the school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Dene people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education and a safe, supporting environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. This, Richardson, would you please cover up?
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Thank you. Our chief school administrator, Karen Moline, and Andy DeGraw, chief operating officer, will present the administrative FYI 2023-2024 proposed budget. Take it away.
Thank you, President Sanderson. So I thought I would just kind of set the table for how we approached this budget season. So historically, we've had in the last few years our COVID relief funding that we've been able to use, and that's coming to an end, and the shelf life is running out on that. So we approached this budget with the task of taking what we're funding in COVID money and moving it into the general fund. So we did that, and we had three choices. We could move it into general fund, we could continue to fund it with whatever's left of the COVID money, or it was not funded. So we were kind of, that was the large context for how we started working with this. And there are still some things that you'll see as Mr. DeGraw goes through the budget that are funded through the remainder of the COVID money. So moving into FY25, we'll need to do a similar process with whatever's funded with that, with the remainder of that COVID money. So with that, Mr. DeGraw is going to begin the presentation, and then as you have questions, you know, just ask him to pause and ask your questions, and we can kind of address things as we go. And we'll have a lot of more opportunities coming up. And just to kind of set the table for what is coming up in the process, on Wednesday, we'll begin having department presentations. Each department will give a short introduction to the department and budget impacts, and that will be on Wednesday and Monday, the 13th. We'll have the rest of the department presentations, and then also on Monday, we'll have a couple of principals here to answer questions that might be school-based. So with that, Mr. DeGraw?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moline. Before I jump into the nuts and bolts of the budget presentation, I just want to introduce everyone. Most of you probably have met Michelle Nielsen right there. She is Sandy Weaver's replacement. And through that, ever since Sandy let me know she was retiring, my hair loss expedited, and that's where I stand today. But Michelle has really done a phenomenal job of, in a lot of ways, picking up where Sandy left off. And she brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise from the Special Ed Department. She was their budget specialist, you know, before coming to administrative service. So I'm just super grateful for Michelle and how she just kind of stepped in and seamlessly took the reins and was off and running. And then also Nico Herbert is with us tonight. She, as our accounting director, has helped out tremendously with budget the last couple of years, stepping into kind of a supportive role behind the scenes, helping us build the foundation of the budget each year, and so grateful for her help as well. Want to also, before we get into the nuts and bolts, just let the board know and the public that this has been possibly the most difficult budget for me in my career to put together. And this, I want, I want, I want everyone to know that this, these, this proposed budget that is being put forward tonight, we feel the weight of this. There's many positions being reduced. We fully understand and are aware that this is people's jobs, their livelihoods. We also are fully aware that this negatively impacts being able to educate students, and so families and students, it's difficult as well. Programs and professionals helping students learn, and we're aware of the challenges that we've had the last two or three years with the pandemic and whatnot. And just want everyone to know that we don't, we don't move forward with this type of budget without an awareness of the challenges. So having said that, there are many things, there's positive things on the horizon that we are noticing. One is we have issued teacher contracts. Was it last week or the week before? Three weeks. Wow, time's flying. So three weeks ago, we issued all teacher contracts. We anticipate that, you know, each year, obviously, we have a certain number of retirements, a certain number of resignations, and we expect there to be a spot for virtually every certified. We can't say 100%, but the vast, 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 vast majority of folks, if you want a position, will have one for you. And then there's been a lot of talk in June already. The session just barely started. Lots of talk about the need, kind of a unilateral agreement for the need for additional education funding at the state level. So, and the Senate Education Committee has already put forward a bill that would increase the BSA by $1,000. So that is very good news for us. We will continue to monitor that and advocate and do everything we can to see that come to fruition. So obviously, a long process still ahead, but that's very, very encouraging. And then also, and we'll talk about this in the presentation, the Borough Mayor, Mayor Ward, has included right around $3.5 million of additional funding in his preliminary. I think they call it the preliminary budget here at the local level. So that's also a very encouraging sign. We're always grateful for his support and the Assembly and Borough's overall support for us here in Fairbanks. So without further ado, we'll jump into the presentation. I think President Sanderson questions as we go, yeah, just so they don't pile up. So yeah, just as we go along, we can run questions through President Sanderson and ask those as they pop up. So student enrollment, we'll start off there. Enrollment in the BSA are probably the two single largest factors for funding here in the district. This is a look, a 10-year look back. So you see there in 2021, the significant decline related to COVID, and then a nice bounce back. 23, so our current October count is that 12,643. That's an actual enrollment figure for '23, current year. And then our projected enrollment that we'll talk about in a few minutes, right in line with that actual number. And then this kind of a shorter-term look back the last couple of years. This, the intent of this slide is to show kind of a, especially recently, a volatility. We set our budget baseline for enrollment based on a projection. So we've already projected, we projected at the beginning of November for next year. I won't use the word guess, but we'll call it a projection. And so the challenge is, is how close is actual enrollment in the fall going to come to a projection made almost a year earlier? So the last couple of years, you can see, you know, in '22, the students came in less. In '23, fortunately, this year, they've come in significantly higher than that. So that's a good thing. And if you go back one more year, it was a significant decline of actuals compared to, right in the middle of the pandemic. So hopefully, in '24, there's the projection. Hopefully, we see a continued positive increase for enrollment, that students continue to come back coming out of the pandemic.
Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. Mr. DeGraw, can you tell me, how do we project? Is there a formula, or, and this is just for the listening public?
Yeah, that's a great question. So what we do is we take, we take actuals from that 20-day count. The 20-day count occurs in October. The first basically four weeks in October is usually how it plays out. And then Dr. Ott takes those numbers and runs them through some nice, fun, simple, complicated formulas to look at, at assigning projections at the school. We actually get down to the granular level of actual class sizes within the schools. So, and we're taking into consideration shorter-term trends, but also kind of a long-term, there's been a long-term, if you look back 20 years, it's kind of been a long-term gradual decline. So we're taking those different factors into consideration.
Thank you.
So a 10-year look back at trend of general fund revenue. Back in 2014, we were right around $220 million in general fund revenue. General fund revenue for FY24 is just under $180 million. So needless to say, a significant drop there. And then a deficit summary for FY24, and these are obviously estimates. So approximately $17 million beginning deficit that we're facing. And then it's made up of a $11.5 million deficit. That, in simple terms, what Ms. Moline described of restoring CARES expenses that are basically general fund, regular operating expenditures that we've been accustomed to as a district. So that's the $11.5 million. Restore that back to the general fund, and then revenue loss through the hold harmless disappearing. So FY24 will be, FY23 was the last year of the hold harmless provision for state funding, and then a $3.4 million loss due to increased assessed valuations here at the Borough, so.
Mr. Doran?
The $11.5, I'm sorry, now part of that is what's on CARES that we won't have, or exactly, how did that $11.5 come?
Yeah, so we took the, we took the CARES list that the board approved last year, the approved CARES list, and we identified the items in that list that were, that were regular general funds. So there were, there were classroom teachers, there were kindergarten teaching assistants, there were counselors, there were, there was an IT, an admins, oh, an IT position. There were positions of that nature that we knew we weren't just going to unilaterally reduce, and so we moved those over to the general fund. When we did that and moved everything over, there was approximately an $11.5 million deficit at that point. Did that, does that make sense?
Yeah, at this point, that's, that lets me know that CARES was factored into that.
Yes, absolutely. And just so, just recalling our conversations last year, I, towards the end of the presentation, we'll have a combined everything. I recall having, you know, Mr. Doran correctly stating that, you know, really, it's, you know, it's just because it's CARES, it's still our budget, right? And so we've basically summarized everything, including CARES, having net additions and net reductions, including both general fund and CARES together, so.
My other question on this one was the $3.4, which is, I just want to make sure I'm clear on why it's considered a revenue loss at this point in, since the state transfers part of their allocation to us, to the Borough. That's just to make up for, and we're, I'm assuming it's because of the uncertainty until the Borough actually gives us that money, which is a hold harmless, I won't use that term, sorry, because it makes us another one. Which just makes up what the state expects from them. Is that why it's uncertainty, and that's why it's?
Correct. Yeah, so, so I, you know, I can't speak to the intent of the founding fathers of the state of Alaska, but it's obvious that at some level, the intent was that as assessed valuations go up, that municipalities take on a greater ratio of overall funding. The problem that comes into play is that the way they deduct that from state funding is they do it through the minimum required contribution. So the minimum required, when assessed valuations go up, the minimum required goes up, and that's what they subtract out of our state funding. The problem becomes is that no, if the Borough was funding at the minimum, it would be an automatic increase in local funding. If they were funding right at that minimum, it would force them to give us the additional $3.5 million. But their funding beyond the minimum, so then it becomes, unfortunately, it becomes a political situation, right? So that will, will, will go through here in the next couple of months. But, so, yeah, the intent is that municipalities take on a greater, greater percentage of the overall funding. The problem comes into play is that they do that through the minimum required, and I'm not aware of any Borough in the entire state that funds at the minimum. So on the contrary, there's many more that fund, I imagine, at the maximum, so. Did I answer your question, Mr. Doran? Awesome. Okay, so.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. Speaking of the Borough, last year, after they decided on, it was about $50 million, they gave us an additional amount for Kinder. And then we, then the four days from ESSA came up, and they said, why didn't you tell us about that? We could have included that. So my question is, and it's every year, it sounds like we're only asking for three, an additional $3 million that was in the preliminary. Why are we not asking for $15 million, which takes us to the max?
I'll let Ms. Moline chime in, and then I can add thoughts to that.
Okay, I'll start. For a couple of reasons. Well, one primary reason. For that kind of an increase, we all live in the Borough, and I think we all live in the Borough, and pay taxes, and what the impact to the community would be, would be significant.
Thank you. So there's a rule at my house that if you don't ask for it, you're not going to get it. If we're asking for it, they don't have to give us the full $15 million, but it would be up to them. So is that something that we could consider, is asking for that whole amount, and let them do their budgeting across the river? But at least we know that we're taking good care of our schools, of our staff, of our teachers, of our principals? Is that?
Yeah. So as Mr. DeGraw said, this is our proposed budget. And so from this point, the board will discuss and massage and decide what they want to do within the proposed budget to turn it into the recommended budget. So if that's the, you know, if that's the will of the board and the direction they want to go, yeah.
And then just to add to that, I think you mentioned it, Ms. Matheson, we can ask, they might not necessarily provide that level of funding that we asked for. So it'd just be important that wherever the board lands on that number, that there be a contingency plan. Okay, what are we going to do in the event we receive those, those dollars that we request? What are we going to do in the event we don't? What are we going to do in an event of, you know, different levels? If it's a significant increase that's asked, you know, there could be contingency plans required for many different levels. You know, we won't know ultimately what we'll receive till, we, we usually find that number out the second week of May is when they typically finalize the, the borough budget.
Which is also a little bit of what you'll see later on in the presentation, is kind of our, kind of an add-back list, which might address some of those, you know, up to the point that they fund us, we'll add back these items. And, and again, that add-back list is, you know, it's, it's the administration's priority add-back list. The board can have their own and change it up. But this is kind of our starting point with what we would see as priorities. And we'll get to that a little bit later.
Thank you.
Moving to fund balance. And, and just before I jump into fund balance, that was, that was one of the, I mentioned this was possibly the most difficult budget I've put together personally. Two reasons. I've been here, this is my fifth budget cycle here in, in the district. We've, every year up to now, we've had kind of a fallback, a safety net available to us, whether it be fund balance or, or CARES funds. And this is the first year that, that fund balance, we'll talk about where we're at with, with that. We're, we're nearing zero there, and then the CARES funds we'll talk about as well. But fund balance is, is a big topic in, in, as far as having a safety net, and then that, that disappearing quickly. So there's two different calculations. The borough calculation looks at five different funds. General fund, well, we'll go through them right now. There's just shy of $11 million in unrestricted. That's the technical accounting term. It's unrestricted. It's not technically restricted for a specific use. So, so basically, it's avail, technically, it's available to us. But I'm going to go through these different fund balances, and basically, it's, it's, most of it is not available to us as far as it relates to general fund operations of the school district. So the general fund, we're showing, and this is at the end of FY '22. So general fund, we showed in our audit approximately $600,000 in general fund, fund balance. The, the problem here with the borough calculation is they do not allow us to subtract out outstanding purchase orders. So a district, an organization our size constantly has purchase orders, plans to purchase items. So we, we set dollars aside and reserve those dollars for this purchase that we plan on making. It hasn't come in yet. We haven't paid the, the vendor for it yet. They're outstanding purchases out there. If you were to, if you were to include our outstanding purchases, I imagine we're somewhere in the range of negative $1.5 million. We all, we usually have a million, million and a half, $2 million roughly of, of, of purchase orders outstanding. Our transportation fund, there's $3.7 million in our transportation fund. The majority of that, those dollars technically would be available to the district. So we have two parts to this fund. There's, there's one part that will be state transportation grant funding that's, that's restricted to transportation expenditures. The other part is historically, over time, the district has subsidized our transportation services, and so there's general fund dollars that we've been putting into this fund. Those dollars would be available us, for us to access. The danger in that is, we're looking at, at the 78 routes that we're running right now. If we were to run 78 routes, which is dram, 115 routes is what we're, we're contracted for, 78 routes, if we did that on an annual basis, we'd run about a $500,000 deficit, just at 78 routes. At 90 routes, which Durham is getting close to being ready to increase to, which is great news. At 90 routes, we're at about a million, $1.7 million deficit, if we did that all year round. At 100 routes, it's 2.4, and at 115 full contract, we're like 3, 3 million and change deficit. That's our, our contracted expenditures compared to the state grant that we receive each year. So there's dollars there we could access. The danger in that is if we burn through those dollars through regular transportation operations, we're going to be right back to having to subsidize that fund a lot sooner than, than we would otherwise. And we've benefited from that the last couple of years of being able to zero out that subsidy, which has helped us tremendously. Food services, there are, there's a couple million dollars in the food services account. However, those are restricted dollars. We're only allowed to use those on food service operations. It's federal reimbursements for our, our national school lunch program. Our equipment replacement fund has just shy of $3 million. That is for student one-to-one devices as well as staff devices that we cover out of this fund. And tech, we, we've benefited tremendously from CARES funds. We, we did a couple of big purchases of student devices, so we've been able to stay afloat. On an annual, regular annual basis, the amount that we are charging the general fund does not meet our current need for replacement of Chromebooks for students and iPads. So that, that, and it definitely does not meet our need for, for, for staff devices as well. So we've benefited in the short term. In the long term, we're currently not collecting enough to stay up with the demand there.
Ms. Marotti?
Just curious, are we maximizing our nutrition services, grant restricted funds on nutrition services, since we had the increase in revenue, but we can only use it for nutrition services? Are we using that and reducing the general fund that we usually do?
Yes. Yeah. So we have zeroed out that subsidy as well. Yeah, I think last year, it was in the 300 to $400,000 range, and we have zeroed that out for current year as well as for FY '24. And then lastly, our risk fund, that, the, the fund balance there, $3.5 million, that fluctuates. It's been as high as $7 million. It's been as low as negative a million. Those, we use those dollars to pay health insurance claims and other risk management claims in the district. And so really, those, those funds, it would be anywhere from $35 to $40 million runs through that fund a year, and that, that, those dollars are, are needed definitely over the long haul to pay for claims.
Mr. Dorn?
Following the explanation on food services for transportation, for the FY '24 year, are we looking to have to subsidize money into that? Or has that been zeroed out because we've saved some money this year?
Correct.
And I've, what saved?
Yeah.
So, correct, we have zeroed out general fund subsidization?
That is correct. Yeah, it's, it's like a good news, bad news. We, we want, we want to provide the service to our families and students in the district. That's definitely unfortunate that we haven't been able to get to the level as of yet that we want to be. You know, the silver lining is that, you know, we've, we've been able to accumulate some dollars there. And as, again, as, as we get closer to the 100 route level, we'll start running larger deficits. The, also, the, I failed to mention the positive coming out of June as well. There is a lot of talk about this component of education funding as well. So we're hopeful that in addition to a BSA increase, that we see a, a bad, a much-needed increase to these. The last time it was updated was, I think, 2016. So it's eight years. It'll be eight years that we haven't seen a transportation increase. So. And then the state calculation, the, the, the calculation at the state is 10% of our general fund expenditures in the general fund. They don't look at five different funds. They're just looking at the general fund. And so they, we're allowed 10% of our general fund expenditures for the current year. Currently, we're at zero. The board policy calls for 6% to 8% of general fund expenditures, which would be at a, in between $11 to $15 million range, if we were, if we were keeping up with that 6% to 8% is what we would have.
Ms. Marotti?
Can you explain where the $5 million that the board requested to reallocate to the general fund balance went?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so the $5 million that we have budgeted current year to go to fund balance technically hasn't arrived into fund balance yet. That would, we would need to go through FY '23, the budget cycle. We, we have budgeted $5 million additional dollars to go into fund balance above and beyond our planned, our expected expenditures. So our expected revenue, planned expenditures, $5 million additional, we wouldn't realize that until technically the end of the year. So we wouldn't, we, we'd be getting a good idea in the month of June, probably mid to late June, because we run, the big, the big expenditure that runs in that time period is we pay out our certified staff additional payments to finish out their contract year, the end of May, I believe. Looking, end of May. We pay out three payments all at once. So that's a big expenditure that comes in all at once, and we'll get a good idea of where that final number is going to settle in, I would say, mid-June. But, so to be clear, it's budgeted at a $5 million deposited fund balance, but it could come in either more or less. It's just depending on how our expenditures actually settle. Does that make sense? And I had another thought, and it went away. So, a lot of thoughts. It does, yeah. Well, I can.
Repeat it so they can hear you. Mr. Dorn? That was in line with the question I was going to ask. I'm glad you asked it. But the clarification is that we're not anticipating the state to, that was supplemental, we'd get about $5 million out of the $57 million that was done for education for FY '23, but we don't expect the state to pay that until maybe next year, or we will get that?
We will receive that current year. As a matter of fact, it's coming, either it's here or coming pretty soon, because we just got a memo on that.
Okay. That, that's what I had, thought I heard from the state, that we would. So that $5 million that we set aside as basically our emergency fund, and to the general fund to have there, we have, we're on track to spend more than what we had budgeted for operations, and you're anticipating that we'll, we will need to use some of that $5 million?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so.
Are you, are you repeating back what you, what you heard me, what you?
Right, right.
No. What I, what I'm saying is that we won't confirm that we have, so what I'm trying to communicate is that we didn't necessarily take an action, when the board approved the budget last spring, there wasn't an action taken at that time where we deposited $5 million into, into our fund balance. That that would technically occur throughout the course of the year, where we would end up with $5 million additional dollars at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. I'll, I'll leave, because I know we're trying to do big pictures tonight. So I'll sit okay with the description, but I will look, we'll, we'll have a chance to get into more particulars on that later, I think.
And, and if, Mr. Dorn, if you're looking, are you looking for actual numbers? Or, I mean, because we, I'm not prepared to get into actual, I can get into generalities of we.
That's why I want to keep it general tonight.
Yep.
Mike, but you know where I'm going?
I do, I do.
And I think we'll have other, other conversation on that. And that's why we have some nice work sessions coming. And I, if I can just, really appreciate this presentation at this level for us.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Marotti?
Yeah, it, it, I, I agree with Mr. Dorn about the explanation of it's, it's, we're not sure what it's going to be like in June, so we can't say it now. It could be more, it could be less than the $5 million. But the entire budget is a big old estimate, right? And so I'm, I'm just curious, we don't have to answer this now, I just want to put it out in the universe, why we're not making the assumption, like everything else in that budget, why we're not making the assumption that that $5 million that the board requested to be left over and in fund balance will be there?
Yeah, we can, I can anecdotally say, I think the $5 million will be there. I can anecd, not anecdotally, I'll say the $5 million turned out to be 5.3, 5.4 million because our enrollment came in stronger than what we projected. So our overall, it's based on statewide enrollment. So our enrollment came in, we gained 430, 440 students, so that dollar amount came in higher. We expect our general fund revenue for the entire year to increase from the state because of that same enrollment increase. Now, I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that. But yes, I would, I would, I would agree that if I, yeah, it's very possible that the number could even be more than the $5 million. I'll leave it at that. Proceed? Okay. All right. Regarding the budget timeline, so September, work starts. I won't spend a lot of time on this portion. I'll get to where we're at right now. February, that's right where we're at. We are presenting the proposed budget to the Board of Education in early February. The months of February and March, this, the Board of Education wants to be wrapped up with its work for recommended budget right around the 25th of March at the latest, just to give my office time to put everything together to get to the borough by April 1st is that deadline. So April 1st is when we send the recommended over. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the borough works, I, I believe we're the single largest line item of the borough budget. And so they, they approve a, a local contribution as part of their overall budget, and they typically do that, that second week in May. And we have dates where we go over and present and, and make our pitch and, and, and talk about the education needs of the district over to the Assembly. So, and then we're typically, if, if we receive exactly what we requested in the recommended budget, typically, there's not a lot of work from there for the board to, to complete, to get to approve. If it's exactly what we expected and, and nothing changes, sometimes recommended becomes the approved. If it differs in any way, last year, they gave us some additional dollars. Sometimes they gave, give us less than what we request, then there would be either additions to the budget to be considered or additional cuts. And then typically, this body finishes its work on approved, the first part of June is when, when that, that work is complete. So overall, our goal, and this has become more and more of a challenge each year, is to provide quality educational services to students in a dwindling revenue environment. So that's what we're constantly striving for. Some assumptions that we always have to put in place in order to create a baseline for our budget, BSA, based student allocation of 5960. That is $30 higher than the prior year due to read act inclusion of $30 additional dollars. A decrease in enrollment of 18 students, again, decrease relative to our actual 12,643, 12,625 is what we projected. So virtually unchanged. And then the increased local contribution ask of $3.4 million.
Mr. Dorn?
For our information. For our information, am I correct that I understood the legislation, the bond reimbursements were made to the burrows to cover the last several years? And I believe the borough, our borough got in the area of about $19 million. Am I correct on that?
I do not know that 100% for sure, so we'll mark that down and get that information to you, Mr. Dorn.
Great, thank you.
But I know there was, there was a significant effort made to replenish those funds, yes. But we'll get exact numbers to the board.
Good, thanks.
So total revenue, including all funds, for FY '24, $218 million, just shy of $219 million. That, all of the funds are listed there on the right side. Overall, that's a $19.4 million decrease. The majority of that decrease came in the, our federal funds, so the COVID, the CARES funds depleting. And then there was a decrease as well in the general fund. So federal and general fund being the two main funds contributing to that decrease. Total general fund revenues, $178 million. The three sources there, local, state, and federal. And the percentages, corresponding percentages. And all of this information is in the budget book. So a total of a $5.6 million decrease in our general fund compared to current year '23. Local revenue specifically, so approximately $56.7 million in this proposed budget from our local sources, the vast majority of that being the local contribution. Other items being rebates that we get from utility companies, P-card, our purchase card rebates, and then some building rental income being other minor local sources of revenue. $3.4 million increase in the local contribution. State revenue, so 90% of our state revenue is foundation funding, $107.7 million. That 7% there is technically really not revenue, it's on behalf payments for our retirement system. It's basically a pass-through amount. It comes to us and we send it right back as to keep our retirement systems propped up.
Mr. Dorn.
Sorry, just get back, go back one slide. Just so I, we can keep in mind, am I correct that the 3.4 increase to the local contribution really is a status quo? Because it's simply offsetting the state, so it's really no additional income?
Correct. So that, that's the number that was decreased in state funding due to our assessed valuations, correct?
Just status quo funding, great.
It's basically a shift from state revenue to local revenue. Yes, that is correct.
Ms. Marotti.
Can you just real quick explain the $7.9 million decrease from fiscal year '23 approved budget? Even though our enrollment is pretty similar?
7.9 in-
It's on page, or slide 16, 7.9 million decrease from fiscal year '23 approved budget.
Yeah. So, so that is due to, the majority of that is the $5 million one-time funding. So current year, we were able to count $5 million in one time that unfortunately, you know, every time they do supplemental, we're grateful for it, but then the next year it disappears and we're re-advocating. So that's five of it. And then the other is just with that 25% step down in, of the whole harmless, yeah. Yeah, we gained a good chunk of students, but just it wasn't enough to offset completely. And then, and then, yeah, assessed valuations built into there as well. So, but the big chunk is that one-time funding. And, you know, we certainly expect, I'd be very surprised, we're, we know, we're very confident we're going to see an increase in state funding. The question will just be how much? And so we expect that number to increase by the time we get to approved budget.
Mr. Dorn.
Do you know ballpark the $30 BSA increase that goes into effect for next year? What does that mean to us?
It was approximately about $700,000, roughly.
Great, thanks.
So our federal funds, the vast majority of those come by way of ImpactAid. There's also some JROTC funding that we receive as well as Medicaid reimbursements in federal revenue. And difficult, ImpactAid's a difficult number to corral. We're, with the help of Ms. Herbert, we're trying to start to create some contacts in Washington to try to get a better handle on ImpactAid and how it works. So that'll help us create some stability and knowing how to better predict this number, so. But there has been a consistent unfortunate decline over the last few years in that number, so.
If you have a question, Ms. Marotti.
Sorry, that was ImpactAid, JROTC. What was the third one?
Medicaid reimbursement.
Oh, Medicaid, gotcha, thank you.
So then expenditures, on the expenditure side, so we line up expenditures with revenues by function, different categories, instruction, special education, instruction, school admin and support, various different categories. The state, we don't do the report anymore. The state used to require a report that showed several of these all the way down to school admin and support are considered instruction-related by deed. And we're always in the high 70s, just shy of 80% of our expenditures are dedicated to instruction-related expenditures. And then by category, that same, that same, those same expenditures. And salary and benefits being the largest expenditure in the district, about 87.5% of our expenditures goes towards salaries and benefits for staff. And then, so jumping into our budget summary, just want to point out before we go any further, that the deficits that are described in the proposed budget, they do not consider any additional costs associated with agreements with our bargaining units. So that $17 million does not take into account any of those expenditures that could come up.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. In the original slides that were given to us, there were several slides regarding that. And I was just wondering why they were removed and whether we could present that information?
I had them removed because I wanted them to be considered separately, not withholding any information to the board. But as we are concentrating on this budget, I wanted to see those slides separately.
Can I follow up with that?
Sure can.
So is there a time where the public is going to be made aware of the extremely serious impact that those negotiations are having on our budgeting in the future? And can you tell me maybe when?
I'll get with you and get those slides back to the board, but I can get information on it and let you know.
Thank you, because I already have the slide, the information from the slides. And I just feel that it's extremely relevant to this conversation because I don't understand how we can, we can discuss a lot of projections, but we can't discuss the gigantic elephant projection of the negotiated contracts. I feel it's disenfranchising to the public and that it was publicly noticed that we were going to talk about it. It was in our original slides, and not at this moment, but I'd like to have it explained to me who and why and how that decision was made to take the most important decision and information that we have about our future off of the presentation regarding our future.
So your point is well-taken. I took the slides off. Again, they are available, will be made available to the board. I wanted to see this total proposed budget without that, those sets of slides. I understand the impact that it will have, and there's no holding back information. But I needed to see this presented like this, and the slides can be made available.
Go ahead, Mr. DeGraw.
All righty, so we'll jump into the summary. These pages are found in the budget book. We'll go through elementary, going the wrong way. Elementary, secondary, district-wide, and then we'll do a CARES portion as well, a summary of the CARES changes. And investments and reductions. The one, the one thing to remember, the board to remember, that a lot of the investments that we're going to see, technically they're investments into the general fund, but just remembering that, you know, if they've been running in CARES the last couple of years, it's not necessarily a new investment that we're making. We're just preserving them by moving them over to the general fund. So at the end, again, as the item that I mentioned earlier, we'll do a net addition and net reduction list at the end to make sure everything's clear because a lot of different stuff going on here. So just want to make sure at the end of what it's all said and done, that things are clear for the board. So elementary, start out with PTR. So for the public pupil-to-teacher ratio is what PTR stands for. In grades K through second grade, we needed to increase the PTR from 25 to 27 students per class. And then in grades 3 through 5, we needed to increase from 25 to 28. And then on the investment side, and again, we tagged each item, whether it was a net investment or whether it was a move from CARES back over to the general fund. So two and a half, and those are certified teachers at Barnett from CARES. And that helped, that allows Barnett to maintain their magnet program that they are running. And then three FTE kindergarten teaching assistants from CARES. And again, that's listed as an investment. However, that's the good news. The not-so-great news on kindergarten aides is that there's a total currently of 18 kindergarten aides that are funded through CARES. So we were only restoring three of those back to the general fund. And we'll see that item in the CARES portion of the summary. On the reduction side, seven FTE certified teachers and four FTE ELP teachers. One thing to note, there's an important distinguish, item to distinguish here. Seven teachers, oh, that's not bad. It seems kind of light. The problem is, is that we're running, we're comparing the proposed budget to the approved budget that we're currently under. The enrollment in the current approved budget is 12,200. Our enrollment for our proposed budget is 12,625. So it's an increase, it's actually an increase of 435 students. And we're, so we should be adding teachers, but we're reducing. So the spread is much more than just seven teachers. It's, we should be adding and instead we're reducing by seven. So that's, that's something important to remember, is that the enrollments in these two scenarios, the enrollment is much higher in FY '24 than FY '23.
Mr. Dorn, then Ms. Marotti.
And again, prefacing, really appreciate Ms. Moline and Mr. DeGraw and the team. Tough, tough budget. My question is on the kindergarten aides. If we only have three, am I correct, there's only now three to be spread among all the schools?
Let me clarify, I might not have done a great job of explaining that.
You're doing fine.
So in the current year, half of our teaching assistants are funded by CARES and the other half are still in the general fund.
Okay.
So this is roughly, roughly half of them in the general, in the, in CARES. We're taking three of those and moving them back to the general fund, the other 15. So in total, there's somewhere 35, 37 total kindergarten assistants.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for asking. That probably was a little misleading. Okay.
Ms. Marotti. Did you have your hand up, and then Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I have a clarifying question on that last one and then a new question. The 35 kinder assistants, kinder teaching assistants, is that before or after the 15 reduced?
That is before.
So it'd be 35 minus 15?
Correct. And then what, what that creates is for roughly a kindergarten teaching assistant for every two classes, roughly. Specifically, what it does is if a school, if an elementary school has two kindergarten sections, there's one assistant. With a school with three kindergarten sections, there's two. That's specifically what this creates in, with kindergarten teaching assistants, and the ratio of assistants.
Okay, then, thank you. My question is, reducing the ELP teachers by four, how many does that leave? Or is that eliminating the program?
So I'm going to ask Ms. Hall to answer that question, because, yeah, go ahead.
No, it does not eliminate the program. Right now, the ELP teachers are split between junior, senior high, middle school, and elementary. So the numbers are fragments. It's roughly 11 and a half, 12, I think, when you add them all together. So this would be specifically at elementary school. Middle school would still exist as electives at the middle school classes, relatively unchanged. And with sixth grade moving into middle school, you've got three grades being handled there. Then third, fourth, fifth at the elementary, it would reduce that number of teachers serving elementary school by roughly half. And so we would look to move to a different style of program, more of a semester-based than a full-year base.
Thank you. And I want to agree with Mr. Dorn to thank you for this presentation. It's exceptional this year. And I appreciate the large amount of detail that you guys have put into it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hardy.
So secondary schools. The PTRs established in secondary, grades 6 through 8 moved from 27 to 30. And just a side note, these baseline PTRs in all grades are the current that we established last year using CARES funds. So that was 25 at the elementary, 27 in middle school, and 30 in high school. Those are the baseline PTRs, the ones established last year through CARES funds. And then in high school, grades 9 through 12 increased from 30 to 32. Investments, and again, the majority of these are restorations from CARES. Two FTE activity coordinators, so one district-wide, and then two, the two high school, Hutch and Ben Ielson, that are in CARES currently. Those were specifically put to small high schools. The two FTE assistant principals at high schools, Lathrip and West Valley. And then three FTE high school counselors, Lathrip, West, and North Pole from CARES. One net ad, a North Star College staff, a director, teacher, and registrar for North Star College. A half a CTE teacher at Hutch, covered by CARES currently. And then one FTE e-learning teacher from CARES, and then e-learning licenses that are also currently in CARES. Reductions on the secondary side, so the PTR adjustments.
Mr. DeGraw, Mr. Dorn.
Again, I know we'll get into these more details later, but general reference, the three North Star staff early conversation, presentation indicated that those were an offset by a reduction of three high school teachers. Is that still the case? That's not a CARES, it's where we're planning to get? That's not a CARES, it's where we're planning to get?
Yes, that's correct. So in order to, we have North Star College established in our funding model. And so we reduced high school enrollments at the various high schools. And so, yes, that did offset through our high school teaching staff allocations, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Reductions, so the PTR adjustments created a reduction of 15 FTE secondary teachers. Three FTE high school grade-six secretaries at Lathrop, West, and North Pole. Three high school safety assistants at the same schools. Nine FTE at all secondary schools of library assistants. And that was the list of secondary reductions.
Ms. Burnett?
Just a quick question, just because this is a lot, holy moly. Yeah, stressing me out just a little bit. But I'm looking at these increased PTRs. I'm only seeing two to three students with the increase, but I'm seeing a massive reduction in teaching staff. And so I'm just curious on how we get that formula. We currently already have class sizes that are well above what the PTR is, especially in secondary.
Yeah, that's a great question. It's kind of, it's somewhat complicated how the PTR actually plays itself out in the trenches at schools. So it's important to note that the PTR is a target. And we certainly will have a certain number of classes that are over that number. And we always have classes that are under that number as well. And so one good resource to utilize for the board and for the public, our IT department has set up a really cool tool. It's a dashboard, a class-sized dashboard that we have on the website, where you can go in and look at a school and see the various different classes and the master schedule of a high school, for example, and see the sizes. Typically, right now, what we see in here is that we're, and Kate and Luke can talk to this a lot more eloquently than I can, but we're seeing a lot of our general classes in the secondary at really high levels right now. And then if you get into like the electives and the more maybe advanced courses, elective courses, those numbers dropping at the elementary level. Again, it's kind of more on a school-by-school basis. It's more simple and to the point with elementary schools. But yeah, you're certainly going to see some classes that are higher. Our intent is to hit right at the target. Unfortunately, the kids don't come in nice and neat in every grade and class and whatnot. So certainly going to see some above, some less. But it's definitely a target that we're shooting for. And the way it plays out, a lot of times, is challenging to get kids in similar-sized classes, so.
Ms. Hardy?
Two questions. For the high school safety assistance, are there how many left in those high schools?
There's two left in each of those high schools.
And then the other one is, does that eliminate all library assistants?
Yeah, so right now, our secondary schools have a certified librarian and then a library assistant. And the answer is yes, it eliminates the library assistants. And at the elementary level, there are library associates, but those are preserved. So sometimes that's a, just distinguish the difference between those, assistants at secondary and associates at elementary.
My question was, isn't Lathrop's population student count going up?
Yeah, compared to last year, it did increase, yes. West Valley's increased as well, so.
A logistical question when we go through the budget book. North Star College is a high, projected to be a high school, but it's not in the high school part, it's in the alternative programs part. Am I correct? It's projected to be a high school? It's a standalone?
Technically, it will be set to be an alternative school. So technically, in the model, the funding model treats it like an alternative school. So and the differentiator there is that it doesn't have an attendance area. That's the distinguishing feature. So a regular high school would have an attendance area. For example, Hutch, technically in the funding model, is an alternative school.
Right, I was going to say, so Hutch is in the high school section.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have an attendance area.
We could look at that.
Just curiosity when I went through the book.
No, we could look at that and move that over into the secondary high school area.
We may wait until we get further into the budget.
Yeah.
Ms. Marotti?
Just refresh my memory, if you can, the North Star College, the funding for the North Star College is offset by the funds coming in for North Star College. Is that still correct?
Yeah, to be, the new expenditures is offset by, there's a little bit of surplus there. There's a little bit more additional revenue coming in than the new expenditures. However, if you include the $400,000 that had been established a couple of years ago, if you include that, it does show up as a slight deficit.
How much is a slight?
I'd have to look at that and get an exact, or not an exact number, but have to get a ballpark. So. But new revenue and new expenditures beyond the established $400,000, the new revenue more than offsets. It was around $150,000, $200,000-ish. But if you include everything, there is a slight deficit.
Sorry, to clarify then, there is no unfunded increase for North Star College? Because we had $400,000 last year, that's carrying over.
That's an accurate statement.
And then the new funding needed is covered by the revenue coming in.
Correct, that's an accurate statement. There's no revenue deficit with new expenditure, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, this, just to Ms. Burnett's point, unfortunately, we have a couple of new board members, right? This is very difficult. This is not, you know, the silver lining here is you're getting battle hardened, right? You know, and the positives, you know, is that we're very confident we're going to be able to add supports and badly-needed positions back to this budget. So that's the thing, that's what I keep, you know, reminding myself of. And that really is, you know, it's real. And it's a positive thing that will, this is really kind of the baseline and we can only go up from here. So that's a positive thing to hang our hats on. So district-wide, we have an ad of a program secretary. We're significantly increasing activity and attendance, enrollments in our alternative programs. And so an addition of a program secretary to support those programs. One systems database administrator from CARES, that's an IT position. And then four nurse managers from CARES as well. So last year, we stood up a new, our inability to attract RNs for an extended period of time. So we're recruiting health assistants and LPNs. They need supervision. They need to be overseen as far as paperwork and certifications are concerned. And so establishing that nurse-manager program has been huge for the school district. And it was originally stood up in CARES, and now we're moving that to the general fund. Seven maintenance positions, also from CARES, badly-needed maintenance positions to maintain our buildings. And then one ad of a grounds maintenance position. Reductions district-wide, 3.5 social services managers. The good news there is those have been just moved to a grant. And so those positions are preserved, moved to a grant funding position. One FTE communications specialist, that's a position here. Two and a half FTE health service positions, and that's really cleanup. We're not cutting positions at specific schools where they won't have a position. That's just comparing current-year FTE in the FY '23 budget to our proposed. We're still covering all schools in the district with a health position. Three FTE SMART positions, a teacher counselor, and a tutor. One FTE accountant position here in this building, an FTE ELL tutor. And then five non-student contact days for support staff. That's school-term general fund positions. About a $500,000 decrease in our FCSA contract here locally. And then about a $400,000 decrease in our curriculum budget for FY '24.
I'm sorry, I was mesmerized by the numbers and all that over there if I didn't see the hands. Ms. Madison, and then Mr. Dorn, and then Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. Mr. DeGraw, why are we reducing SMART positions? I thought that SMART was one of the successful programs.
So we'd like to have Mr. Minert, or, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's nuanced. So, Mr. Minert, would you kind of explain our thinking in this process?
Yeah, so our thinking is a proposed redesign of SMART with CTC covering the SMART program. They've got existing certified staff and small enrollment numbers. And if CTC moves over to Nor Dale, that would give them adequate space to serve their current students along with the handful of students that we have. CEC, I'm sorry. Along with those students at the Nor Dale education center. Yep.
So maybe I'll go with two questions, if I can go with two questions, and then if necessary, come back. The FCSA contract is for?
That's our Midnight Sun Academy. That's students placed locally here from oftentimes out of Fairbanks. I can let Ms. Hall speak to the specifics of that a little bit more.
We actually have several FCSA contracts for schools. Our elementary YES program, our secondary YES program, and then the Midnight Sun Academy. The two YES program contracts are staying intact. And it's a reduction in the Midnight Sun Academy contract based on enrollments there.
Okay, so we'll still have Midnight Sun Academy and provide some services, but it won't be at the same level?
Correct.
Okay. The other question is really a request. When we get to program, we really get into SMART and the CEC plans. And when I look at the investments and the reductions, I will express a concern that we can deal with in the process. But I think it's good to give you a heads-up that I am looking at an equity concern. We are reducing services to students at some greater, great needs. And we're providing services to students at the other end of the spectrum. Not that they don't have needs. I'm particularly looking at North Star College and then SMART CEC. And I have concerns there. So I just want to give you a heads-up on that as we move forward. We can get into those details at the time.
Ms. Marotti?
Is there, has there been any research done on grants that could take on the SMART program with any of the mental health grants that are available to us?
We have been, actually have, applied for a couple of mental health-related grants, and we weren't awarded them. And I know that our grants team is constantly grant mining for those kinds of things. So that is something we can continue to look at. We just haven't gotten anything yet.
I have another question, Ms. Dorn?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yes. Could you explain the shift from two nurse managers from health services positions? What's, how do those relate?
So the no relation in the nurse-manager positions and the 2.5 health services positions. So specifically, the 2.5 health services positions are either health assistants or LPNs that we employ district-wide, and then they're placed at different schools. So comparing our current FY '23 approved numbers that we approved last year compared to the number of these total health services positions we need at each school this year, we were able to reduce by two and a half positions. So no reduced services. We're not leaving a school without a position. Just comparing the FY '23 approved positions to what we need in FY '24, we were able to reduce those by two and a half.
Okay, so every school still has a nurse or?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, not necessarily an RN. There are some RNs scattered around the district. But just our inability to consistently recruit those RNs, we're then plugging in with LPNs and health assistants. Where we can't find RNs.
Ms. Marotti? No? Okay.
Okay, so to our FY '24 CARES proposed budget. In order to look at FY '24, we'll go back a little bit. We'll go back to our FY '23 approved budget, look at what we did last year. So total funds available a year ago was right around $15.1 million. The proposed, or the approved CARES budget that was put together by the board was around $12.1 million, right in that range. And so we expected to have right around $3 million to be available for FY '24. So fast forward several months, we knew, positive news there is we expected $3 million. We anticipate as of a couple of weeks ago that we'll have right around $4.3 million available for FY '24. And so the investment that we are proposing is to fund 37 FTE classroom teachers with those funds.
Ms. Dorn?
Thank you. Is there a particular reason why we are estimating, feeling, you know, 1.3 million is a nice difference than what we had budgeted? What to is to look as we're going to have more?
Yeah, so I would say the main two variable factors increasing that number are, there's, we likely didn't fill every single position that we approved in CARES. And then also, we were assuming, we always have to assume average salaries. And oftentimes, folks come in at lower levels than what we anticipate. And so those would be the two main contributing factors to that increase.
And will this 4.3, or whatever we have, are we anticipating to zero out CARES this year?
Those 37 teachers would zero that out, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
I'm sorry, I did have my hand up. If we could just quickly go back to the district-wide reductions. What is the curriculum, the $415,000?
So we were able to do that because of our participation in the curriculum adoption program that teaching and learning has been involved in. So Mr. Bean can give us details on that if, okay. Yeah, okay.
So reductions in our FY '24 CARES proposed budget. So these then would be items. So as we've talked about prior, we're moving some items over to the general fund. And then there's other items that are being reduced outright. And this is a list of those items, not restored to the general fund. So 16 FTE math and literacy teaching assistants. There was probably one at each elementary school. And then there's the 15 kindergarten teaching assistants that I referred to earlier. Three were restored to the general fund, 15 are reduced. Two Hutch teachers through their small school allocation. Five FTE e-learning teachers. So in the current budget, there's six e-learning teachers total. One was restored to the general fund, and five are reduced. One systems database administrator, so there were two IT positions in CARES. There are two currently, one. One we're restoring, one we're eliminating. And then e-learning licenses, $230,000. Special ed summer enrichment, $268,000. And then a CEC lease and related custodial services. And the plan would be for CEC to move over to the Nor Dale Education Center.
Ms. Matheson and then Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. We're reducing sped summer enrichment? And I thought that sped was a separate account. So if you can explain that to me, that would be lovely.
So special ed does work out of the general fund. So not sure if that answers that. So we do fund our, typically, we fund our regular summer school programs through the general fund. And these were, Ms. Hall can correct me if I'm wrong. These were additional supplemental services that we were providing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hall.
So we have a special education extended school year program that's required by federal law. It happens every year, will continue to happen as still part of the general fund. When we were granted CARES money, part of administration's decision on how to spend that money was to provide some additional enrichment support for students with disabilities over the summer to sort of make up some of those gaps. And we're coming to the end of that money. So this will be the last, this coming summer is the last summer that'll be funded.
I really appreciate that explanation because I wasn't understanding this. Thank you, guys.
So that, and that is an important point that Ms. Hall makes is that those expanded services will still be in play this summer.
Okay.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks, I just want to put it out there now that I do not support moving the CEC to Nor Dale. It defeats the purpose of the program and it creates a barrier for the services that the students receive in that area. We say this as a board usually every year. And so I'm just starting it now. I don't support moving CEC to Nor Dale or eliminating their lease. I think it's a great investment and much needed.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, I have two separate issues, if I can. The first one is, I see the e-learning licenses and like all the e-learning teachers are reduced. Can you explain what's happening with the e-learning program?
So I can clarify the reductions and then I'll defer. So there were six total. We're not eliminating all, we did restore one of the positions. And then there was a total of $430,000 in e-learning licenses. So we restored $200,000 to the general fund and then are reducing the 230. So we're maintaining just shy of half of the licenses that we were carrying in CARES. And before I turn that, we have seen, and I'll let folks talk details that can better than I can, but we are seeing a reduction in enrollments in our, in our e-learning programs.
Yeah, Mr. Minert, you want to expand on that? Or Ms. Smith, are you, would you like a deeper explanation?
I'll take it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Minert.
Yeah. So a change in programming, elementary e-learning. If you remember, we had a full-time elementary e-learning program available the last two years. So that would be cut going into the next year. Families, the handful of families that are still in that program, we would transition them to BEST. And they would still receive the same programming that they're currently receiving, but they would do that through BEST. The handful of middle school families that are still full-time e-learning. The one continued e-learning teacher that we would employ next year would be responsible for those middle school students. And then I think it's important to note that the high school level, we really haven't seen a reduction at all. And in fact, we've seen a bit of an increase there. But then looking at our licensing contracts for the different platforms we use for e-learning, we were able to make some reductions there. So we're confident that we'll be able to go forward with MOAs with our current teachers in district to teach those e-learning classes and then have available licenses, licenses available for a few of those classes that are outside of content areas that we have teachers certified to teach in.
I just want to add, our high school e-learning program, we'll go back to where it used to be before COVID. We still have a number of students who are asking for e-learning classes, but there, it is not full-time. We only have a handful of full-time e-learners. So we are going back to the way that we used to do the program, which is quite well. And it's cheaper for us.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think my own kids have had good success with the high school program, so I like that. The other thing is, I wanted to say that I'm not willing to categorically say no to the CEC lease. And I'm very interested to hear the details of the SMART CEE combination. And I'm looking forward to that information. So I hope it's detailed, I hope it has a lot of stakeholder input and that we maybe get to hear from the CEC students about it. Because I think we hear a lot from the board, hear a lot from certain other community members, but I'd like to hear from those CEC kids.
To add on to that, I would like to have them actually come in, both SMART and CEC, and be able to tell us how they feel that will affect their programs. I think we've been receiving a lot of emails. So giving them the opportunity to address us in a work session, I think is important.
I have a question concerning our, I saw the slide, but I guess I don't remember where it went. The YES or, because you gave the FCSA and then ES, the YES. And so are they both fully staffed? Are they, I mean, if we're struggling, are they struggling?
I'm going to let Ms. Hall talk to that. FCS covers several contracts for us. And so we'll let Ms. Hall talk about that.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure I understand the question about staff.
Well, I was just curious. I don't remember, I should have asked when it came up. But it was something about the YES school. And so whatever that was, and I was...
Yeah, so that, okay, so that, yeah, the YES came up during, what slide page is that? 30? On the screen there. So FCSA is Family Centered Services of Alaska. We contract with Family Centered Services of Alaska to operate schools for elementary YES, secondary YES, and Midnight Sun Academy. They, it's bulk payments, they create their own staffing. Those folks are hired by FCSA, not by our school district. And yeah, it is my understanding that they have difficulty hiring in the same capacity that we do.
Thank you. Ms. Dorn?
I'll just echo some of the concerns that have been mentioned on CEC and SMART and that equity issue that I mentioned earlier. Question on slide 31. The Hutch teachers and I, thinking between, we have two magnet schools. One's getting additional staff, one's not. And also, there's a small school allocation. But has Hutch lost that? I think those two were from, actually out of CARES to make sure that magnets, magnet schools got equitable last year. But this is referenced specifically small school allocation. So if you would address how we treat magnet schools. And then also, the small school allocation, did they lose that? And I noticed that Ben Ileson gets a small school allocation and it's in the budget. It's a minimal amount. There is nothing listed for Hutch, so I'm a little confused on both those fronts.
Ms. Dorn, can you please state your question? I'm not clear now.
Okay, so one question is, the Hutch teachers that were in CARES and equitable treatment to both our magnet schools, why there's a differentiation? So let me ask that question, small school, I'll delay second.
So specifically, and I'm not qualified to speak to the origins of the missions of the magnet schools when they were established. However, what I can speak to is Hutch receives a small school allocation of five teachers. Five FTE. I imagine at the, at the start of Hutchison High School, there was a mission to fund teachers in order to, you know, teach the different pathways that they offer. And so I can't speak to why five was arrived at. However, specifically what this is doing, it is in CARES. That is correct, Mr. Dorn. The two currently this year are funded out of CARES. It's reducing that small school allocation from five down to three. Okay? Now, how that, if that is equitable or not equitable to Barnett, is that the other school that you're referencing, the other magnet school? I can't speak to that. Our inclusion of the 2.5 FTE to Barnett comes directly from the work session that we had a few months prior, where we talked about Barnett, their magnet school model and the mission that they are trying to meet. And so Ms. Moline and myself, in conversation with EDs, we determined to preserve those 2.5 FTE to Barnett because of, directly because of that work session. So the, I'm not sure if I've answered your question, but I'm speaking to the...
Well, I will take that answer for tonight. But we, I will want to get into it later, so we don't bog down tonight. I am a little confused on the small school allocation, which my other question was that these two teachers in the reduction were under CARES. What is the small school allocation? If, is that additional money that we get as being a smaller school?
Let me, let me answer that question. So to that question, no, we don't receive any additional revenue for supply, for providing additional resources to Hutchison High School. So we, the way we treat Hutch is, we fund, we have their student enrollment projection. We fund the same PTR. We staff them at the same PTR as other high schools. Then, once we're done with that, we add five additional FTE to that school. It's a small school allocation outside of the PTR allocation, and it's not funded by any source. We do that above and beyond.
Can I do a follow-up? And then I'll end it for tonight on this topic.
Yes, then we'll go to Ms. Barnett.
Okay. So, do I remember correctly that part of the standing up North Star College as a standalone school? Because of its size, there's a small school allocation out of that? Or is it a different term that effectively the same?
It's, it's a school size adjustment, is what it is, through the state formula. So the smaller a school is, the greater a multiplier of students it receives. Hutchison is up in the 400 range. North Star College is established at 175. So those multipliers are different, quite different within the model. But yeah, you're, you're along, you're along the right track.
Thank you.
And so just to finish, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Barnett?
If you need to finish something real quick, because mine goes a couple of slides back real quick. Okay, so my question is related to curriculum. I'm sorry, I'm just catching up in my head here and just trying to make two plus two equal four. You said, when it came to curriculum with that reduction of $415,000, that it was because of the REEDS Act that we were able to do that? But that money was, is for ELA, maybe I misunderstood, which is why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, so just to be, to be really clear, the curriculum adoption project is not a part of the REEDS Act. They're two separate things. However, the district did have the opportunity to participate in DEED's curriculum adoption project. And through that, we received $1.6 million to purchase a language arts, a K5 language arts program, which we were going to have to do anyway. And so the state essentially is paying for that for us.
Got it, thank you.
So that's going to allow us to, you know, save a little bit of money.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'm just going to save it for another day.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Okay, so district-wide personnel. So we're looking at compares, comparing current year FY23 to FY24 proposed total FTE. This includes CARES. Okay, so it's general fund plus CARES for both years. Current year and FY24 proposed. So total FY23, current year, 1,542 FTE. FY24 proposed, 1,458. So the difference is a drop of a little over 83 FTE, district-wide.
I'm sorry, Ms...
Just clarifying, so in my head, that's classified and certified positions together. And there was one other, and now it's, oh, the, the loss though, because we have many unhired positions and other things. I've heard through the grapevine that we think that all those people would end up having positions within the district, so it's not a pink slip situation.
Yeah, so with classified staff, it works differently. But without getting super specific, in general, there will be, because of vacancies, there will be many opportunities for folks. Kind of a double benefit. There's vacancies currently, there'll be opportunities. And then again, you know, I'm repeating, you know, I just have to grab onto the positives is, you know, we hope to be able to restore a good number of these positions that we're talking about tonight as well. So, you know, hoping, advocating and looking at, looking at the positives. So, but yes, there are vacancies that, many of those vacancies are in the special ed world, which, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a challenging world. I think there's a special place in heaven for, for these folks. Yes, absolutely. But, but yeah, certainly we do have a number of vacancies around the district right now.
Ms. Marotti? Do you have...
Okay, just because you said it, does that mean that we're thinking that we might involuntarily transfer people who are dual certs into sped positions in order to do that, or?
The person that could answer that is strolling right back into the...
Maybe you should know the question first.
Then maybe no.
Do you want me to repeat it, Ivory?
Sure, I didn't hear you, sorry.
No, I was out of the room. Are we thinking that one of the ways that we're going to fill some of those sped vacancies are going to be having people who maybe aren't teaching in sped but certified, moving into sped positions through that? I know the little piece in the contract that says that we can move.
Right, is that...
Specifically involuntary transfer them into those positions.
Right, you could talk, go ahead. I was just going to say, I don't, you know, there are, there are definitely vacancies in sped. Right now, the overwhelming majority of vacancies we have in sped are ESA positions, not FIA positions. And we're in a super early hiring season. So, you know, we started this school year with some vacancies. We had, I think we just had one sped certified teacher that was involuntarily transferred between schools at the beginning of this year. And I'm optimistic that we're going to start next year in a better spot, so I don't...
Do we have a current sped vacancies for certified, right?
It depends on whether or not you're counting school psychologists and speech-language pathologists and some of those district-wide positions that...
And there are also some vacancies that are being filled by long-term subs. So we closed out some of those vacancies as well, as we're looking forward to next year. One of the things that we did this year that I'm really super proud of doing is that we've started recruiting early. And so we've been recruiting for elementary math, science, and special education teachers since December. Kate and her staff has brought on sped teachers for next year. And we are looking at what our vacancies are, we just met today. And so I really am hopeful, I say that because I feel really good about the start of next school year, but maybe I'll be, I'm just, I'm optimistic. But I really feel... But I, I really feel like we're going to be in a good place next year. But we were just talking today about endorsements and things of that sort with our sped teachers, if necessary, looking at making changes in that area, in what we can do. But I'm not anticipating the need to do a lot of reassignments at this point. I, I'm not seeing it right now currently. But as we look at those vacancies here in the next few months, that could change, but I'm not seeing it right now.
And, and I just want to add a little bit to that. With our change, with our adjustment in our practice, I think it's going to serve us very well going into the future in this new climate that we're in for hiring, because by changing our practice, we're getting ahead of the game instead of being behind in the game. So, those educators that are looking to make changes across the state, across the country, we have, because of our HR team and their efforts, we're able to get those in place well ahead of time, so we can start into the new year with a lot more certainty than we have in the past. So, I share Ms. McDaniel's, I'm proud of us for the, the work that we've done there.
I just, thank you. It wasn't meant as a criticism. It was an honest, as a sped teacher myself, like, where are we at and how is this going to affect dual certs?
Oh, absolutely. I think that that's one of our hardest areas to, to even recruit for, especially if you're recruiting a later time in the, in the year, like we have been historically doing. I can definitely see why you have that question. But I'm hoping that the changes that we put in place over this school year for next school year will alleviate that. I think we just have to see how the, how our efforts work out here in the next couple of months, and then we'll be able to see how the puzzle lands and what gaps we have and how we need to fill those. So, we, we're meeting probably every couple of weeks at this point to make sure that we're in a good spot.
Ms. Maradi?
And, and if you don't know, it's okay. Maybe you could email us. But can you break down that 83.4 between teachers, support staff, and then other?
We can, yeah, we'll, I'll be able to, we can eyeball that here in the next few slides. We'll be able to kind of, kind of eyeball a number.
Oh, cool. Okay. Thanks.
So, this, these slides here are the net adds and net reductions. So, general fund, cares restored from here, not restored there, blah, blah, blah. These are the net adds and net reductions, both general fund and cares combined. So, investments, and these are district-wide, all of it. Three FTE North Star College staff, one program secretary in the Alternative Schools and Programs Department, and then one grounds maintenance position. So, a little side note on that, we put out an RFP for snow removal at two schools, and the bill came back at somewhere around $70,000, whether it snowed or not. So, we just made the, the decision to add a position in that department for that purpose.
Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. This one FTE grounds maintenance, then, will be in charge of all of the snow removal? Or in charge of a group of folks that are going to?
Not necessarily in charge, but a peer of the existing grounds maintenance folks. So, we made a net add of one grounds maintenance technician, or whatever the term, the title is. Not a manager, just a, a grounds maintenance staff member. So, you know, now we have those services all year round, you know, 24, well, not 24/7, but eight hours a day, five days a week, you know? Rather than spending 70, and that was a minimum number. It could have been higher if we got more snow, et cetera, et cetera. So, that'll, that'll dramatically help improve our, our efforts in grounds maintenance. So, unfortunately, a short list of additions, and now for the reductions. And then again, this is going to be a summary of what we've already seen. So, not to rehash, but I, I received feedback that the lists were all confusing, and so these are just, these are the total reductions. Twenty-two total teachers district-wide related to PTR, the four ELP teachers in elementary, the two Hutch teachers, the five e-learning teachers. So, here, Ms. Maradi, to your question, you know, and I kind of have these grouped by category as well. So, I tried to arrange them in a, in a sensical manner. Three, the three grade six secretaries at the high schools, as well as the safety assistants and library assistants at all secondary schools.
Forty-eight total?
I'll take your word for that. The 16 math and literacy teaching assistants, and those were in cares. The 15 teaching assistants in kindergarten, the 2.5 health services positions, and the one ELL tutor.
Ms. Maradi, you had a question?
Yes, sorry. Are the teaching assistants considered on the teaching or support staff?
Support staff. So, these are all, these are all support staff positions right here so far. And then here, you have the three SMART positions, the accountant, the communication specialist and systems database administrator. So, two of those SMART positions are certified, one classified. And then you have two non-reps, the accountant and the systems database administrator, and one support staff position, which is the communication specialist. And then this is the last page, I promise. The five non-student contact days for support staff, the FCSA contract reduction, the curriculum reduction, the e-learning licenses reduction, the sped summer enrichment, and then the CEC lease and related custodial services. So, these first two pages, staff-related reductions, and then at this last page, the first item is a staff-related reduction, the five days, and then reducing related various Priority add-backs. So, this, you know, we've talked about, you know, we, we hear a lot of, there's a lot of positive developments that we're seeing. We're optimistic, we're going to see additional revenue later in the budget cycle. And so, what, what is, what does the list of add-backs look, look like from administration's perspective? And as Ms. Maline mentioned, you know, this, this list is obviously open to be worked and adjusted and edited and changed and added to and taken away from, et cetera. So, we have PTR at the, at the top of the list. These are numbers to maintain our current PTRs of 25, 27, and 30. So, the, and it's divided up into two categories, 3.7 million, and then the four points in general fund savings, the 4.3 million is what we're currently using to maintain. So, okay, this is an important point, so I make, I want to make sure this sticks. In order to maintain our current PTR, it'll cost us $8 million, because we're using $4.3 million in cares funds to maintain the increased PTRs. I want to make sure that makes sense. If we didn't have the $4.3 million in cares to fund 37 classroom teachers, the PTRs would go up by another three students per grade, district-wide. Okay? So, $8 million is what it'll take to maintain 25, 27, 30. And then the, the rest of the list that we have, kindergarten, and we've, I've included values so that the board can see, okay, you know, it's probably going to be a situation where we're receiving additional revenue at some point, and we start to put the pieces of the puzzle together. Kindergarten teaching assistants, grade six secretaries, that we received feedback from principals, that, that was the most painful reduction that they were seeing. They're all, they're all difficult, obviously, but, but specifically that, and, and specifically due to the fact that we reduced, I don't know if you recall, we reduced a grade six secretary in the current budget as well. So, this is the second reduction there in consecutive years. The ESA support staff, five days, 600,000. Library assistance is about 500,000, and then safety assistance, a couple hundred. Cuts in this building, about 390, and then the Hutch teachers at 235. So, total of that list is about 11 million dollars. And now, it's important to remember, this isn't the totality of the cuts that we've made, but these were just the, the reductions that we, we identified to have on our priority add-back list.
Ms. Doran?
Just so I understand, the, the PTR one, it's $8 million. We expect to cover, that we can cover that with part of cares, part of, cover part of it with cares. And so, we would be looking at 3.7 actually to, to do this.
Yes. So, yes, to specifically...
So, it's really not 10 million? We can...
Yes, to clarify, it's 8 million by FY '25. So, specifically in FY '24, it takes 3.7 million dollars in additional revenue to maintain those PTRs. Yes.
Right.
To maintain the...
The current PTR.
Yes, the current, exactly. Exactly.
Right. Okay. So, so our add-back is actually 4.3 million less on the bottom?
Correct. For FY '24, correct. Yes.
Okay. So, instead of 10, we're talking about 6.6.
Minus six, six and a half. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. A couple of hypothetical scenarios. There'll be a lot of talk of different BSA numbers that will fly around, you know, left and right all session long. 6,800 BSA, let's take that. That is kind of a number that the district put out, the Senate Education Bill put out a number at 69, 60. And so, again, there'll be a lot of different numbers. So, putting that together, it's important to note that, and this is, this is, this is really important, this, I don't look at FY '24, and that's the end of what, what we're looking at. We have got to, as a district, as a organization, look at a two-to-three-year window. And it, and, and, you know, a big question in this session is going to be, is there some kind of, everybody's calling it an inflation-adjusted bill passed to ratchet up? Whether, you know, we, we could have a debate on whether we want an inflation-adjusted, you know, adjustment, or some other kind of adjustment where it ratches, ratchets up the BSA automatically. In the absence of that, if we receive a significant increase with no expectation in sight of any future additional increases, that needs to factor into our long-term planning. It has to. It absolutely has to. And so, I just want to put that out there as food for thought for, for everyone tonight. A 6,800 BSA will generate in the neighborhood, this is super, don't hold me to this, this is super estimate, big, huge, 40-point font, bright red, flashing estimate, approximately $18 million in additional revenue to the district. It's amazing, there's 50 different factors that can change that, and will change that. It's a rough, rough, rough number. So, $18 million would allow us to restore budget cuts for FY '24, would allow us to maintain PTR into '25 and offset the loss of the cares funds that we're still using this budget cycle, and, and, and then cover currently known, our labor costs increase every year. It would allow us to cover those cost increases that we know at this point in time. This does not cover, we, we would, we would be unlikely to be able to cover any kind of significant cost increase related to negotiations.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate again how important it was to see those slides at this moment and to have that information. As Mr. DeGraw said, having gigantic unknown estimated costs not presented in this is, well, he didn't say, I'm saying that it's ridiculous. And I have a question for Mr. DeGraw, is, my understanding is that when we do negotiate our contract, it's going to be retroactive. Am I correct in that? That it would go for this school year?
So, all I can do is speak to what is on the table at this point in time. And, and just to, to, to remind everyone, the Board of Education is the, is the deciding on, on, as far as the district is concerned, you guys are the deciding body. You guys, you guys determine, determine that. Obviously, we're bargaining in good faith, and that process will play out, where, you know, mediation, arbitration, et cetera. What is on the table right now, the unions are requesting current-year retro items as far as salaries and benefits.
Point of order.
Yeah, I was going to say...
We're, we are in negotiating, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because, because the mediation, I believe, the ESA's already done a mediation, and we are currently waiting on the FEA.
Correct. We have completed mediation with the education support staff. We are moving to arbitration with that group. We still have to do mediation with the Fairbanks Education Association. That's scheduled for the very beginning of March, so it's still underway.
Yeah. So, that's why we weren't discussing it, and those slides were removed. Did you have a clarification, Ms. Smith?
I would like to clarify that all of the information that was contained in those slides is complete and utter public record. All it is, is Andy went and did the math and laid it out, summarized on slides. It is ridiculous to call it somehow not negotiating in good faith or violating our terms or anything except for publishing public information in a way that the public can understand it, for goodness sake. That's our job as a board, is to communicate the important information of this district to the public in a way they can understand it. And if you want to read through the negotiated agreement and tell me that every person in this town can understand what massive numbers those agreements that are public, public, mean, they can't. And we are responsible to make it so that they can. And those slides that were taken from this presentation made it so that they can. And I'm still going to say that I want to see them sooner rather than later presented before I have to present them myself.
Hopefully, you'll respect the term. You won't do that, because I have made it clear that the slides will be presented. I just felt that since we are already at this juncture, that certain things needed to happen first so that we were clear, see where we stand, then we could have that information and come back with it. I have Ms. Hardy and then Ms. Maradi.
I would just say that we're, you know, treading lightly on certain things, because Mr. DeGraw is one of the negotiators on the team. And so, since we're in arbitration and also in mediation, there are unfair labor practices to consider, and since he is both presenting us information, as well as some of that information coming about and comparing things to a BSA, that can be seen as swaying public opinion. And I think that that is important to keep in mind when we present things. It is one thing to present factual, this is what the proposal would cost us in dollar amounts that are very digestible. You've given multiple ones. But taking that out of context and comparing it to a different number does give certain opinions. So, we should be careful and consult lawyers before we start doing things like that.
And just to be clear, I do have a call in, but I did not have, was not able to have that conversation. And since this is something that I'm navigating and learning myself, I wanted to have that input. So, Mr. Doran, did you have a statement? Or, oh, I'm sorry, it's Ms. Maradi and then Mr. Doran.
Thanks. I just want to support the, the decision that our board president made, just because... say, similar to why Mr. DeGraw hesitates to assume the fund balance, that won't be clear and calculated and accurate until June, similar to negotiations aren't done, and so we don't know what those numbers will look like in this budget. We, we're not sure, it's not finalized, nothing is finalized, and so I think that it made sense not to include them. But it also makes sense to present them in another way that's not related to this budget discussion today.
Mr. Doran, did you have anything to add?
No, I think I've made my point on that, I was, I had a question regarding the slide 38.
Thank you, we'll proceed with that, Mr. DeGraw.
Just so, understanding these, and I appreciate these scenarios, and particularly relevant, because we have things on the floor, filed in legislature right now, that gets us in these ballparks. Just understanding, if it's taking the 6,800, if we restored our add-back list, the increase, when you carry that into the multi-year projection, that, that 18 million is, is a per year, would, would this increase, would, so we'd get 18 million? My big question is, if we add everything back, it's not a carryover that we'd have to cover the next year, but we would be able to maintain what we've added back, not necessarily add to that at that point. Am I understanding that right?
Correct, assuming that's a one-time increase.
Not a one, it's an increase that would stay there-
Correct.
Over, not, it's not a one-time supplemental.
With no subsequent additional increase.
Right, so, so, but from '24 to '25 would be actually the same, it would maintain status quo in terms of what we're able to solve, offer, rather than looking at cuts. Does that make sense?
I'm going to need you to repeat the question, Mr. Doran, yeah.
Okay, my question is, 18 million, if we would get for FY '24, we'd have the same funding level the next year. We've added back for FY '24. Your projection is we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't have those massive cuts in '25, it would stay the same, same basic staffing, not-
Yes.
No, no, no.
I'm-
Only the currently known. But no, 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 no.
Ms. Matheson?
No.
Did you have a question or a comment?
I have a comment, no. There's a very big, it'll cover currently known estimated costs, so, no. So saying yes to that is ridiculous, no, absolutely not, because these are only the currently known estimated costs.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw, if I can, my understanding, which is limited, would be that we would also be incurring the step increases, which would immediately create a deficit, and we would have, once again, the giant elephant in the room of our contract.
So, yes, I think, I think you're all correct. Here's, here's what's going on here, is, as it stands, we're going to be looking at a six-to-seven million dollar deficit again next year. I think what, if, if, if the 18, the hypothetical 18 million dollars comes in, that's beyond what we would need in FY '24 to keep the district whole, and then it would cover those known increases in FY '25. The disappearance of the 4 million dollars in CARES, and, and labor cost increases that we're aware of. I think that's where Mr. Doran was going, I think that's what Ms. Matheson and Smith are, are talking about. So, the, the one-time increase that's going to happen every year would be beyond what we need in the moment, but then this goes to the point that I was just making of us looking two to three years out, okay? It would be a mistake to us to grab and commit every last dime permanently, with no known additional future subsequent increase on the table. And so, yes, and I think, I think you guys are all saying similar things, so. And obviously, this is just very preliminary and rough, rough estimates that we're talking about. But in theory, that's what we want to be looking at. If we get a significant increase, looking two years out at what our known, at this point in time, estimated cost increases are, and, yeah. I, just, President Sanderson, if I may, just a request from, from, from my seat, we need to have not a, not a hypothetical conversation, a real conversation, to make sure we understand the ramifications of negotiations and how those play on, on the budget. Those are very relevant conversations. We can talk facts, established things that are known, that it's not conjecture, it's not hyperbole, and just make sure we understand, because it does play into it, and that's, we're just talking dollars and cents, you know, unfortunately, that's what it boils down to, so, I'm, I'm, I'm holding back, but I think it's appropriate, so. But just, if we can have that conversation, you know, sooner rather than later, there'd be-
Ms. Marotti, then Ms. Hardy.
I support Mrs. Smith and Mr. DeGraw's request for a real conversation about the negotiations. I've been asking for one for months, and I haven't seen one on the books yet. So, a work session on negotiations would be fantastic, not just for budget, but for a lot of other reasons.
I'd also like to say, yeah, we need real numbers, we need real facts, we need how things impact, and I don't think anyone is denying that those realities are there. I just want to remind everyone in the room that our teachers are our partners in this, our educators are our partners in this. They're not our adversaries. What they're asking for is not because they want to bankrupt our district, you know, all of us have financial things within our own jobs, and remembering that is that respect piece that teachers continually keep saying is missing. It's not that we don't value our teachers, and everything should start with that. We value you, and this is the, the, the financial realities of where we're at.
Point of order, we're getting off budget.
Yeah.
I would just like to end by saying, Mr. DeGraw, we'll schedule a work session for those slides to be included, and we can have real, the conversation that we're asking for. I would like to move on with the rest of your presentation, because there are at least two other department heads we have not heard from that, I'm trying to see how it, they fit into this. So, I will say for our listening audience and to the board here, and to the administrative staff that's sitting around the table, these are tough conversations, they're hard conversations, but it's part of the board's work, and I'm not shirking my responsibility at all, I'm learning and navigating as we move through this time. So, we will have to do that together, as that's what the team and the board is about, and so, Mr. DeGraw?
All right, thank you, President Sanderson. So, one other scenario, 6,400 BSA scenario, and again, like I say, we have no idea at this point where things will settle, but just to give folks idea of what, how different scenarios would play out. So, a 6,400 BSA would provide in the neighborhood of 8 to 10 million dollars in additional revenue. Again, very rough estimate, don't hold me to it. That would allow us to maintain our PTR into FY '25, and then possibly, and this, this very much depends on those additional, the labor costs going up in FY '25, how that shakes out. It's possible that we'd be able to restore some of the FY '24 reductions, and, and have that stick into FY '25, but much more difficult at a 6,400 dollar level.
Ms. Hardy?
Is it possible to get the numbers when we do that next session, that says what a BSA increase would need to be that would cover the current proposed negotiations?
Point of order. Yes, guys, why do we-
I was asking for the work session, just so that it's in there when we do it.
But I've already stated that we will schedule a work session.
I know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll schedule it. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. So we've got the two different scenarios, the 6,800 and the 6,400. When we go to Juno, are we advocating for just the 6,800, or can we advocate for more than the 6,800? Like, what are the other school boards? Like, are we talking to other school boards, or how are we going to budget?
So, so to answer your question directly, we did coordinate with many other school districts, organizations on the 6,800 number, and, but for me, my floor now is 6,960. So, that is the number in the Senate Education Bill. So, advocate away.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will say that our, our board legislative priorities, did I identify 6,800, but that was, I mean, if they want to give us 6,960, we won't send back the extra.
Yeah, Anchorage was 6,840, I think the school board, State School Board Association was right there in the 6,800 and change, so. And, and, you know, the, the Senate Education Committee said they wanted to, you know, make a splash and, and, and be bold, and so that's, that's the route they've taken, so I think we support them and advocate with, with folks to that point.
If I could, Mr. DeGraw, and I will say that as the, as the legislative committee set their priorities, and we were just doing some taping today, the point that Mrs. Smith brought up, that she would like to see, and that is along with our document of our priorities, we are finishing up, and Josh has done a great job of a video that, from students and staff and a lot of input, so once they look at our priorities, we spelled it out because of building maintenance and some other priorities and clarifications that we did, and then along with the video, I think it'll be impactful. Already, there seems to be a lot of shifting, so I, I think that the Education Committee and the Senate, you know, they understand that they, they have to do something different. It's statewide, and all school boards, all districts are across the board, you know, talking about this, so I'm, it's, the legislators are listening, but they, you know, it's just, we have our priorities that we've set, and attached the video, and so that'll be part of it, and then, there was another thing, it's off-topic, but just to clarify this, that we talked about some talking points, that we're all on the same page when we are talking about this legislative priority, so, that's just a sidebar.
So, just, you know, to summarize these last two slides, the point of the message here is that as a district, in order to maintain the supports and the staff that we have currently, we really need to be up in that 6,800, 6,900 realm. You know, I think you can, we can all agree, 6,400, you know, obviously, any additional BSA is a positive thing, but, but at that, at that point, we're not really able to hold the line into, into FY '25. We could temporarily hold the line here in FY '24, but going into FY '25, if there's, if there's not subsequent increases, 6,400 is not going to be enough, so. And potential budget remedies, so these are a couple of items, very high-level, very preliminary, as, as we've set. Turn the time over to Ms. Malane here, or do you want me to?
No, I can talk to this a little bit. As we entered into this budget season, we brought in a lot of voices to the table, and I just want to take this time to just appreciate the executive director's team and the work that they've done in looking for places for efficiencies in their departments, in their programs. We talked a lot of different ways, we talked with principal groups, different groups were brought into this conversation. And as a part of that, we started down a couple of roads that I wanted to bring before the board, and the purpose of introducing you to these ideas is for you to determine if you want us to dive deeper into this as a possibility, moving forward, not for, not for the school year, '23, '24, but maybe looking at '24, '25 school year, take some time to look at these different options to, to consider for fiscal efficiencies. The first one that we looked at and got a little bit of input on was a condensed school day. So, this would be the school hours that kids were in school would be condensed, and teachers would do their prep time in a common prep time. So, how, how school day, especially, I'll talk first to elementary and then a little bit to secondary. So, right now, in a school day, during the school day, kids have PE and music and library, and during those times is so teachers have their prep time. So, instead of doing it that way, doing it, condensing the time the day down, and not having PE and music and library every day necessarily, but students having PE or music three times a week or two times a week, and allowing the teachers to have their prep time outside of this, this student contact days, like, not student contact day, but the day that, the time that the students are in the classroom. So that could represent a significant savings, depending on how we did it, it would streamline our, our PE, music, and library options for kids. It would also condense some times, some, a little bit of time in ESSA hours. The, the other side of that is that if you have kids in school less time, that means parents have to find some way to, someplace for their kids to be. And a part of that exploration of the, the actual possibility of that, the reality of that, would be to consider ways to make that happen. Do we have a fee-based school, after-school program where parents that want to opt-in can, can pay a nominal fee to have their kids? So, it, there is, that's one way that we just kind of looked at it for a little bit, and thought, this is a bigger, this is a bigger project than just, you know, busting it out here on this budget. So if that's something that the board would like for us to, to pursue, we can start down that road and start gathering up stakeholders and getting some real concrete ideas behind that. High school would have a different challenge in how they would construct their master schedule, and what that would look like for prep times with their teachers, and the advantage of it is sometimes teachers don't get to have a common prep time with their different grade alike, so this would give them that common prep time. So that's one of the things that we looked at, if the board would like, we can check into it further. And the other one is the custodial services. You've all gotten the emails about the challenges that, that our custodial staff is facing, not enough people to cover the buildings and the challenges that come with that. So, so one of the options that we looked at, some other districts have seen successful, is looking at what it would, how, how it would be a savings, or not savings, to contract out the custodial service. So if that's something that the board would like for us to pursue, we can go out and look at and see what it would cost, if there would be any cost savings, and we can just kind of explore that as well. Those two particular items are a bigger, maybe, project than, than we are ready to start in the middle of a school year. Custodial contract, we could probably find out pretty quick what the savings might be on that, so we can pursue that. But we just wanted to put it on the table and see if it's something that the board wants to further explore, thinking that, that, thinking down the road a couple of years, knowing that it's going to take a few years for the district to stabilize, and these are a couple of ways that we can find some significant savings.
Right.
Ms. Marani?
Just a couple of quick questions, I guess. I'm not sure. And you don't have to answer now. Maybe if you could email me if you don't know. But how would a condensed school day save money? What, where would the cost savings come from and how much? And then with the custodial services, if, if we were to look into that and do that, would that mean, and, correct me if I'm wrong, what would that mean laying off all of the custodians and contracting with the company that would then provide the custodial service?
So I can, I'll talk about the, the second one, the contracting out custodial services. It would, so it could be set up in, in a number of different ways, up to what you just mentioned. Yes, it would involve laying off custodial staff and contracting out with a third-party company. The, and, and Ms. Mullane mentioned this, the reason why these two items are on the list and they're kind of long-term, looking-forward items is there are significant savings here well into the seven figures, each item individually. And so that's why they're there. So, but yes, did I answer your question, Ms. Maradi?
For the custodial.
And it could be, it could be a hybrid. It could be, well, we keep head custodians, but the rest we can't, of those services, we contract out. It could be all, it could, you know, it could. And again, our intent is if, if the board were to desire for us to look into this, it would be, the first thing we would look at is if those potential savings are even there. Maybe they're not there, but maybe there are. And so that would be the, the, the first step that we'd take. And I'll let somebody else talk to the condensed school day savings.
Yeah, so the condensed school day, the savings would be around, again, reduction in staffing for the direction and the number of PE teachers needed in the elementary school or, or specials teachers altogether. And that would be the primary, probably the largest ticket savings. And then reduction in the days of, of the, the hours of ESSA, instructional ESSA staff. So ESSA staff that are like teacher aides or in the classroom, their, their day would be shorter. So that's, that's where the savings would come in specifically in the elementary school, that there would be a large amount of savings. And there would be some in the high school, but it would look quite different.
Go ahead, Ms. Matheson.
I have a comment and a question. So we're talking about reducing PE teachers. And I know it's hypothetical, but our children don't move enough. I am completely opposed with getting rid of PE teachers altogether. I think that our children moving will only help them learn better. So I will, I would like to state right now that I'm opposed to condensed school days, unless we can find tuition assistance or grants for the fee-based after-school programs. And making sure that the after-school programs that we do have are as enriching as the after-school program that we have right now for the students who aren't paying anything. So I want that stated. I am completely opposed with the condensed school day, no matter how much money we're saving on that. And PE, absolutely not. I do not want to cut any type of PE out.
Mrs. Smith?
I support looking at a condensed school day. We had three-quarter day kindergarten for years and years. I thought it was awesome. I mean, I think it is just something different. And until you see it laid out, until I see it laid out and think, that looks horrifying, I'm not willing to write it off. I'm quite interested in it. And I think that our, we have to focus on what our main task is. And our task is to provide an education. And if we stay squarely focused on providing a top-notch education, the rest of this stuff is going to work out. That, parents are going to take responsibility for the things they need to take responsibility for, and we're going to take responsibility for what we need to take responsibility for, which the Constitution of the State of Alaska says is education.
So I will just, once again, reiterate that at this point, we just are interested, that it's just on this budget report to know if the board is interested in exploring further, that we could possibly come up with some scenarios, like what would it look like in elementary school? What would it look like in high school? What could it like, look like for the custodial folks? This is just for the board to start thinking about, if this is a path they want us to go down to, to spend the time to come up with some scenarios of what a condensed day might look like or what a custodial contract might look like. Or if as a board, you say that, no, that's a no starter and, and don't waste your time doing that. So that's all this introduction is about, is for the board to decide, you know, do you want us to explore possibilities? Or do you just want to say, no, we'll do a different way to make our budget balance in the future?
Put myself on the speaking order. Go ahead, Ms. Hardy.
You've got it. Just, so we are having this, a little bit of discussion right now, because I don't want to get another, like, I'm going off topic. So, okay. If that is the case, then I am not as interested in the elementary portion, but I have heard from numerous high school teachers that they very much appreciated, or not teachers, principals, but teachers as well, the schedule that they had during COVID, where they had a common prep in the morning. And I, like, hearing it, I've heard it from staff and I've heard it from, Melissa and I have gone around to lots of the high school principals. And hearing it from them, that seems like something definitely worth exploring. And it doesn't put the burden of childcare on the adults as much anymore. So that would be, I think, a worthwhile, I know it might have less savings, but it, if it helps the teachers get their job done and have those common preps, then I'm in support of that.
So I guess I'm next on the schedules. So I would not be in support of a con, contracting out custodial services. And one of the reasons I would not be in favor of it is because when you take a look at the, the staff that we have, they know our buildings, they know our students, our buildings are secured, they are clean. And right now, I understand that they don't have the manpower. But I would never disseminate that department because of the value, long-term value that I see. Number one, there are other alternatives that we could possibly do within the custodial field itself. One, just prior to coming on this board, we had a high school student who graduated and before he graduated, he was actually, you know, took on custodial duties. So we could expand that possibly. And there are other scenarios that I think that could be explored, because your lead custodians know the building inside and out. They are not only the manager of the building, secure the building, but there's a supervisor, supervisor of the building and the staff and the supplies and the whole thing that works around it. Everything flows through that department, equipment, computers, papers, trashcan liners, whatever. It all flows through them and they are very knowledgeable. And I think that what we possibly could do is set down our lead custodians and canvass them. And they could be part of the solution to come up with, you know, another way we can do this. So for security's sake, they maintain that for our buildings. So they are multifaceted when it comes to the support of the educational team that we have here in the district. So I would not be in favor of looking at that.
So just, just for another general comment, we don't necessarily need to know tonight.
Okay.
We just kind of put it out there on the table and something food for thought for later on. And as we go through the budget process, you know, a little bit, I, I will say on the idea of a condensed school day, there are districts that are going to a four-day school week, looking at condensed schedules, and not always for fiscal reasons, but for, you know, better educational outcomes. So the, all these are just like thrown in the middle of the floor and, and think about it, you know, whatever, how, whatever your thought process is. And then later, if, if that's something that the board wants to, us to pursue, then we'll be happy to do that. But we don't, we don't need to settle anything tonight, in my, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Mullane. Uh, Ms., Mr. Dorn?
So if I understand correctly, these ideas wouldn't impact our budget for next year? They would be further down the line. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the idea being, if this is something that we want to pursue, we do that pursuing next year, come up with some good plans and, and processes, and then launch it in the following twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you for that clarification, because that was my thinking and it would be the request. I really appreciate your putting out some of this. You know, my visceral reaction is, no way. But when I do think some of what we did during COVID with all-in-person instruction and stuff like that, and I think high schools have been exploring ideas of, you know, three, three or four classes at a time and then, you know, moving through the year. So I hope they will continue to look at things that work good for them. But I, what I would make the request is that you've prompted something that if we do not get the funding from the state, the investment in public education, we are going to have to change. We are at that breaking point. And that when we know where the state, the legislature is headed, the governor, the borough, we get this ready for next year, that we have a meeting that just maybe talks about options. Either there are going to be opportunities, because we will get an investment in education, that's outside the budget process itself, we get the budget done, but that, that we just put in the hopper, that we have both to look at opportunities and drastic challenges that could really give us an opportunity to think and be creative. So.
Yeah, and I, I agree. I, I think, and, and just, so, you know, Mr. Dorn, when we first started talking about this, I was like, yeah, I don't think so. But as we talked through it, as, as, as often happens in EDs, you know, they, they talked me down a little bit. And we, after we look at the realities of it, and not only the realities of the budget savings, but the reality of enhancing educational opportunities for kids, then I was like, okay, this is something that could possibly be a really good idea. So again, we don't have to know tonight. And if some point down the road, we want to have that conversation about these particular options, we can start that work. Mr. Dugra?
All right. So the last slide of the presentation. So two, you're kind of just a two-year estimate projection, including this FY twenty-four budget. This first left column is the deficit that we're facing, and then the rough, general picture of how we have, have accounted for that deficit. So the little more than nine million dollars in cuts, the increased local contribution and utilizing the last of the CARES funds. And then, you know, we, we kind of already covered this concept in, in a couple of different slides, but just remembering, you know, and looking at a two to three-year outlook for the district, just remembering that we're going to start out with a, a beginning deficit again because of those CARES funds. This is a very, very, very rough estimate, because these, beyond the CARES funds, it's really hard to, you know, assessed valuations could, I don't know if they ever go down, you know, but, you know, it's possible. And so revenue loss, that could happen in a number of different ways, assessed valuations, student enrollment declining. It could also happen in the form of increased expenditures that we haven't accounted for. You know, if our bus contractor all of a sudden starts running ninety-five to a hundred routes consistently in FY twenty, in FY twenty-five, that transportation subsidy could return the need for that. It's, it's possible. And then a million dollars in salary increases, that's basically accounting for step increases district-wide. So kind of a minimal, minimal increase there. So just kind of a two-year outlook, FY twenty-four and then FY twenty-five. And I, I think, I think a lot of the talking points from board members on that, you know, as, as, as it relates to whatever the BSA ends up this year, just having that couple of year outlook in mind as we, as we look at how we, we, we utilize our resources in FY twenty-four is the point I wanted to make here. So that is my presentation for the evening, our presentation. And if there's any additional questions.
Ms. Maradi?
I have a, just a few things. One is just a reminder, whomever makes the slides, even on the computers, I'm color deficient, so I can't read, like, where they are if there's no labels. If you want to know how I see things, look at the black and white ones that you get. That's how I see it. So if you could just keep that in mind. I, I mention it once a year. It usually gets fixed. I want to, I have a clarifying question. So earlier you said that eighty-seven percent of the budget is salaries and benefits, and approximately.
Yeah.
And eighty percent of the budget is instructional. So is it safe to say that non-instructional funds, expenses are only seven percent of the budget? Non-instructional salaries and benefits, sorry. Non-instructional salaries and benefits is only seven percent of the budget?
It would be more like around twenty percent of the budget, because of the two different, those are two, those are the expenditures grouped in two different ways. So the first one, let me hold on.
So eighty-seven percent salaries and benefits and then eighty percent instructional?
Yeah. I'll do that a lot quicker this way. So this slide, the slide up on the screen, sorry about the color.
I see I have questions all the time.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is, this is by function, meaning instruction is this for, I'll use my, is my cursor showing up?
Yeah.
Yeah, the forty-one percent. The special ed is considered instruction. Student support services is instruction. Those added up together are somewhere in the seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent range. The areas that aren't considered by deed is like district admin support. And then operations and maintenance, FMD, is not considered direct instruction, although sometimes I would beg to differ. But besides that point, so there it's grouped by the type of job duties, the different, the, the, the different costs are associated with.
Can you point to the ones that those are associated with, those two?
Instruct, or the non-instruction?
Yeah, the admin and support and operations and maintenance.
Yeah, district admin and support is this one right here.
Uh huh.
And then activities, even though that's super student-related. And then operations and maintenance right here.
Okay, okay.
And then the rest of this right here is all considered the student instruction categories.
Got it.
And then here, it's grouped differently by salaries and benefits district-wide. So this is all employees district-wide, even non-instruction-related staff. And that's the, the eighty, it's actually eighty-seven point five percent right there, those two.
Got it. And then I just have two suggestions. One of them, I, I think it would be great if board members could testify every two weeks at the borough. Right now, we currently just have a one, one and done. And it's not the whole board, it's just the president and the chief school administrator. And I think maybe Mr. Dugra goes. But I, I, I would suggest that we take this year to educate the borough assembly by testifies three minutes. And I think it would be time well spent and invested. And then similarly, I'm hoping that the board can consider empowering the board to advocate every two weeks for the BSA Um, for the BSA increase to sixty-nine sixty, to sixty-nine sixty in Juneau. Um, but we would need to be able to speak on behalf of the board. We would need access to our lobbyists to make appointments with our legislators. We need board support for this. Um, and so I'm hoping that we can get that on the agenda sometime soon. Sooner than later, so that we can make sure that we can go down to Juneau, advocate for the increase in the BSA and other things. Um, with the board's support and approval. So, thank you.
So um, I, just to put kind of the, the ending punctuation on, on tonight's conversation. Um, Mr. DeGraw began his presentation talking about the, uh, the difficulties that we're facing. Um, not just this year, but going into the future, being um, somewhat new. Uh, that we've never been down this road before. Um, and that the impact. Um, has not escaped this group as um, as we put together this budget, difficult conversations have happened. Uh, the reality that we are talking about not FTEs, we're talking about people's jobs. And their livelihood and um, how it is they spend their days. Um, these are hard decisions to be made. And what we know is if we leave something in this budget, we have to take something else out. So, uh, so those are, are weighty kinds of decisions. And they're, they've been weighing heavy on the executive director team, on. Mr. DeGraw and myself for months now. And uh, so I just, I, I don't want to. Talk about money without talking about people, um, because we are a learning organization and to be a quality learning organization, we have to have people. Um, and we value our people highly in this district. Um, and uh, that, that's important to us that. Uh, that we remember that in all of our budget conversations, because it is something that comes up in our conversations regularly as we've struggled through this. Um, so with that, we'll end our presentation and I would like to, one more time, express my appreciation to our assistant superintendents, our executive director team. For um, for walking with me, us on this journey to come up with a proposed budget. Um, so I appreciate their work and um, their willingness to find deficiencies within their own department. Um, for some time, these departments have had cuts and continued to offer the same services. But we've come to the end of the road to do that. Um, any more cuts to our departments is a reduction in service. So, um, so with that, I'll turn it back to our president.
Thank you, Mrs. Meline. I'd like to take this time to um, thank the administration and our exempt staff for. This presentation. Also want to thank the board because of dialogue and the work that we have ahead of us. We knew that. The next two months are gonna be tough, uh, looking at numbers and looking at um, the future for our students and our staff and. With community input. Um, this is a difficult walk, but um, each one of our board members uh, bring. A considerable amount of strength and wisdom and insight. And um, as we work together, uh, we'll make the best decisions possible. For our listening audience, um, uh, we know you're listening and we thank you for listening. And uh, your partners in the work that we're doing here. So part of it that we will um, present tomorrow is our funding resolution. Uh, we've done our legislative um, priorities. And then we hope to have some talking points. As we move forward to talk to our legislators in Juneau, uh, if we can help with that, but we're available, so. We'll continue the fight. We, I remember saying that we're coming for them. I hope they remember that we're coming for them, because we need this money for our students so that they can have the best education. I believe our district. Provides some pretty awesome um, um, situations for our students. They take so many awards all across. I mean, nationwide, they do that. They represent us in so many ways in their families, in this community. So. Um, when we come to this um, work, work, it's never an easy um, session. It gets heated, it gets emotional, but it's the work before the board and we've committed to do the work. We ran for the office. We, we're take, we took our seats. And I'm not running for the work. I don't always understand all of it, but um, I'm thirty-something years passionate. And um, with the team we have uh, at this table and other ones that'll come at this, come before us. Uh, in these next two months, we will get the budget and take it where it needs to be. So thank you for your time. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, maybe I don't need.
Second.